I'd like to call this special Board of Ed meeting to order. It is 5:04. It is Friday. I don't even know the date.
6:10.
Friday, the 10th of June. Present are Ms. Ziem, Ms. Brown, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Darling, Ms. Raymond, and myself. Hold on, I have this up.
What's going on?
It's Friday, nothing's working. Okay, so there are a couple of motions, a couple votes that we have to have in the full board meeting in order for it to carry over into the rest of the world. So, the first one is we, as a full board, have to vote on the chair and the vice chair for the ad hoc committee. What was presented in the ad hoc committee was nominating me as president and Jess as vice chair, not president, chair and vice chair. So, if anybody wants to call out those motions.
Can I just say for the record that I think FF covers all this and that we didn't have to have a full board meeting in order to do the work, the FF tasks that committee was doing?
There was no amount of emails that was going to change this.
Who's FF? What'd you say, FF?
FF, Policy FF says that for naming facilities, we create an ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee elicits feedback from the public and then brings that information to the full board for a final vote, that the work ought to be done by the ad hoc committee established under FF. And so, I just want to say that for the record and apologize to everybody who had to come out here on a Friday afternoon when we have a very clear policy that says that.
So, if, may I chime in here?
Yep.
So, if you had, I think when we have these questions, we should take them to legal because I think if you just let it...
Oh, Sandra, I'll send you the emails.
You send them, and they said we needed...
I got an email back from Central Office saying that any, that no motion can be made or no vote can be made in the ad hoc committee that then can be acted on until it goes to the full board. So, I was told that the vote that we had in the ad hoc committee about sending out just a request for people to send an email to the Board of Ed address if they have suggestions about a name is a directive that needs to come from the full board, so it needs a full board vote. And because we wanted to do this before the students left school and had access to their Chromebooks, because we wanted some equality there, I asked to hold this meeting ASAP so that they can send out that information first thing Monday morning and give the students adequate time to think and then write something up and then send it to us before the end of school.
I agree that they may have done that, because they did that does not mean they're right. In the end, it is the attorney, that's why you will notice that I have a tendency to send my little emails to the attorneys because we don't take, we don't take orders from admin. Admin is not our boss any more than we are their boss. It's a two-way street. And if the attorney sent back and said that he thought that policy was sufficient, it would be pretty hard with the attorney saying that for them to challenge us. They find it very easy to challenge us otherwise because I don't think, I don't think they have a lot of respect for us. Am I in public saying this? I guess so.
Yeah, so let me, let me read to you what was sent to me, which, I mean, there were a lot of emails yesterday.
Again, though, I don't, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, Jen, but if they're coming from admin...
No, and the thing is, the superintendent was saying that he can't just take a directive from the ad hoc committee, it has to come from a majority of the full board.
Wait a second. I understand, I still would have confirmed that with the attorney.
I'm getting that email.
Ms. Ziem, can I just jump in here because I'm wondering this, because the full board authorized the ad hoc committee. We voted for, we authorized the ad hoc committee to make decisions.
Yep.
And so, this is what I can't understand. I, like, I'm like Ms. Ziem, I always send everything out to legal.
Mm-hmm.
And I always get their opinion, but when we voted on this at our full board meeting, we established the ad hoc committee. So, in essence, we gave that committee the authorization to do what needed to be done.
Yep, so this is, this is per NHSBA, this is from, from Central Office. "All ad hoc committees are created through the full BOE making a motion for the creation of the committee and its powers, duties, responsibilities. The motion to create the ad hoc committee is as follows. Ms. Bishop moves, seconded by Ms. Ziem, to create an ad hoc naming committee for the new middle school comprised of Ms. Bishop, Ms. Brown, Ms. Darling, Ms. Raymond, and an alternate of Ms. Johnson, and invite the student representatives to Superintendent and Alderman Dowd. The motion for the committee creation should determine the responsibilities of the ad hoc committee. The motion above states the creation and members. As most motions would be similar, they suggested defaulting back to the policy on committees and ad hoc committees, BDE, which states, quote, 'by a majority vote, the board may create additional special ad hoc committees to advise the board on specific topics.' The topics' membership authority in terms of each committee will be specified in writing. To our knowledge, the document stating such does not exist. With that being said, it again defaults back to the policy, again, for committees in general. Committees will meet as needed on problems pertaining to said committee and will make recommendations for full action, for action by the full board. They stated that we should contact city or any attorney, and their interpretation may be different. For example, some would interpret it as a committee not having any authority to give direction or take action over the full board without board approval unless specified in their creation or a committee of the whole, which it seems neither the case here." They also sent me back the city charter, which I would not find, which I could not find anything on ad hoc committees or formations, but I did find some verbiage that stated multiple instances of committee work goes to the full board of Alderman for approval, and that's paraphrasing. So, what I, what I said, and I don't care about the fight at this point, is we want to get this out to the students, we want to get this done. This was already an entire day of what I think is wasted time. All we wanted sent out was a notice to email the board, and I decided to give up the fight, just have this quick meeting, because if we're going to go back and forth about this, we're going to end up at the end of school and we're not going to have the equity that we so desired at the ad hoc committee. So, the first thing that we have to do is make a motion about who's going to be chair and who's going to be vice chair.
I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but the whole point in bringing this up is that in the future, I would like you, I'm asking you as the chair representing all of us, that you, that you not allow, that you not allow the mayor, that you not allow the Alderman, that you not allow anybody but this board. And, and the way you do that, I believe, is that if you had just sent a quick email, it's too late for that now, I understand you want this meeting fast, and that's fine, I will go with that. I'm just saying that in the future, I think you would have been better served if you'd gone the other way. First off, you'd have gotten an answer quickly and, and it wouldn't have become, you know, they think and we think, it would have become the attorneys who are, in my opinion, as close to an authority as we have.
So, I took it as that was from NHSBA, I would have emailed them as well.
But that was from the NHSBA sample policy regarding creating committees. It was not from the NHSBA sample policy FF entitled, "Naming Facilities," in which it says, "The board shall create an ad hoc committee, and the committee shall get information from the public about the naming of the committee." It specifically, that policy, which is from the School Boards Association, tells that that committee in particular has this obligation. Now, I don't, I, I agree with you, we've wasted entirely too much time on this, but sitting here and feeling the frustration from the public about the communications that they get from the board and how the public is consistently dissatisfied with it, I'm just feeling particularly overwhelmed by the whole circumstance again. And so, my hope is that we can have a follow-up with this with Tom or one of our attorneys or Barrett or Will or any of the attorneys who knows policy and get their opinion going forward so that we don't end up in these battle of wills when all we're trying to do is get the community involved in the process of naming the new middle school, which is what's best for everyone in the community, including the school district. So, it's so frustrating.
Maybe it comes down to, you know, figuring out, you know, job descriptions where whoever's in charge of communications, we're able to have our own section of that person to do Board of Education communications and not need it to go through the superintendent.
Yep.
I don't see that being the case.
Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Darling?
Ms. Darling's first.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Darling.
Thank you guys for recognizing that we came out on a Friday afternoon when we didn't originally mean to. I don't think any of us can hold you guys responsible for some people have a hard time taking direction from strong women. That sucks for them. That being said, I move that we nominate Jen Bishop to chair, and can I also nominate vice chair at the same time? And Jess Brown to vice chair of the ad hoc naming committee.
Actually, let's, let's split it up into two only because Gabby sent out, you know, let's just...
Can we just say motion one, motion two, motion three?
No. So... Because I have to write it down every time because no one provided me with the notes form that we need to fill out for the minutes, so I have to write it all out.
I had requested that anybody who would be impacted by our request to send out an email from Central Office be present today. So, it seems like nobody is impacted by this request to send out an email.
Right, so I didn't get that by email as the clerk with a template of minutes to fill out. So, so you're going to nominate Jen Bishop as the chair of the ad hoc naming committee?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, that was Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Darling, Ms. Johnson.
Can I ask all in favor? Am I allowed to do that?
Oh, you probably need to be roll call because...
I want you to have 30 breaths in the next 60 seconds or I'm going to cut off your head. This is ridiculous, I'm sorry, but...
All in favor? I'm going to just do it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us, okay.
Yes, wait, this, this took seven minutes to get everybody to respond to my text message. Just saying, you guys are awesome.
All right, and so then the second motion, because we split, was the motion to nominate...
I move that Ms. Brown be vice chair of the ad hoc middle school naming committee.
I'll second it.
Oh, it should be name, not nominate, motion to name, motion, just like Usher said, so motion to name. Ms. Brown. I think I'm running for queen. Sorry, guys, I'm writing as fast as I can. And that was Ms. Bishop and Ms. Johnson again?
Yep.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. So...
Can I say this one?
I'm, well, so we have another motion here about the communication, however, I would like to put a time on it that it needs to be out by Monday at noon, so that the communication...
Right, I think I'm going to change the wording.
...by noon in there, and I also think we need to make another motion. Well, I don't see us needing any more full board support in regards to the ad hoc committee because we'll do this and then we'll have our discussion about who we're going to nominate and then we'll present it to you guys, but do you guys think that there needs to be some sort of a motion in regards to the ad hoc committee being able to work, being able to request things from Central Office in regards to information and data collection for the purpose of being able to properly nominate a name for the new middle school? Do we need to create that now before we run into this again?
I think it would be safe to. Would that be something like, "I move to..." How would that be worded?
I don't know. Chair to...
Give the ad hoc committee power to work under, within the confines of Policy FF, up to and including communications with...
That information and data collection pertaining to the new middle school are decided within the ad hoc committee.
You should write it down so that it's clear. I can't write, I'm writing the other motion while you're doing that.
You don't listen to myself. So, move.
How about if the ad hoc committee, that the full board authorizes the ad hoc committee to be allowed to request information from Central Office, review the surveys, what else do we need?
I think if we just say, work within...
Just data, I just don't want anybody to come back and say, "It's not clear."
Right.
And anything else that pertains to the naming of the new middle school.
Redundant.
Can we make a...
This is completely redundant.
It is, it's redundant.
That the next time they ask us to do that, they have to get full board support? Feeling snappy tonight.
For the public, I think it's unfortunate when we have secretaries telling this board what to do. I have to tell you, it's embarrassing.
Well, I don't know that that's the case because we, we communicate with the superintendent and then the superintendent directs his staff, so...
That's kind of where the, the sticky point is, is I had asked if I could work with Ms. Hines in regards to communication, and then I was told that we don't have full board, we don't have a majority of the board direction for me to tell the superintendent to tell one of his subordinates to do something.
What I think is sad is when we're clearly trying to do something that's in the best interest of the school and the community, anybody would put any kind of roadblock, especially one that's so easily argued.
I think it's...
I also want to, I just want to make sure that we're not, we can't be disparaging people underneath the superintendent per our policy about, what is it, KEB that we've been talking about?
Yeah.
So, we need to refrain from specifically saying anything about anybody who is not us.
But I think this is kind of ironic because the other night at our full board meeting, we discussed the policy that board members should be able to not go to the superintendent if they need any information, request information from other people in Central Office, and it came back to bite us.
I say, does this give us grounds to re-bring that up in the next?
I would, you know, because this isn't right. I mean, the superintendent works for the board. And this is, and again, this is why we, and rather than the staff in Central Office telling us, "Don't have time," and coming back to us, this is why we need the board secretary who works for us, and if there's a legal issue, they then go to the attorney and request the information, rather than this being all piecemealed.
I'm on board with that.
Yeah, and it's very challenging, I think, when we have people who are, I mean, very limited part-time board members who have jobs and other things that they're doing outside of it. We're not at a desk emailing all day long, we just, this is not the reality. All right, so, the motion regarding the communication, and I think we might need to have one for the mascot as well, but this is what I wrote down. "A motion, I move to direct the superintendent to send a communication to the students, parents, guardians, and staff of the district requesting submissions for the name of the new middle school. The information from Policy FF to be included in the communication, the communication should be sent by Monday, 6/13 at noon and should be posted on the website." Submissions to be due, submissions to the board should we do on...
June 22nd.
June 22nd.
Can I add something to that? The superintendent and/or his staff.
Okay, motion to direct the superintendent or designee, or his designee?
That's, that's fine, as long as it's clear.
Okay, so I'm just going to read it again to make sure I have it properly. "I move to direct the superintendent or his designee to send a communication to the students, parents, guardians, and staff of the district requesting submissions for the name of the new middle school. Information from Policy FF to be included in the communication. The communication should be sent by Monday, 6/13 at noon and should be posted on the website. The submissions to the Board of Ed are, shall be due on June 22nd." objections?
So, you have students, parents, teachers, do, I just want to say, everybody in, anybody?
All stakeholders.
Oh, okay, and stakeholders. Students, parents, guardians, staff, and stakeholders. All right, last time, I'm going to read it through one more time, okay? "Motion to direct the superintendent or his designee to send a communication to the students, parents, guardians, staff, and stakeholders of the district requesting submissions for the name of the new middle school. Information from Policy FF to be included in the communication. The communication should be sent by Monday, 6/13 at noon and should be posted on the website. Submissions to the Board of Ed shall be due on 6/22."
I second that.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bueller, anyone?
No.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
So, the...
Do we need to do one for the mascot? Because I was under the impression that there were some problems with the mascot, and that was the one that was time-sensitive, was the color choice.
I thought we were leaving that to administration.
Administration is saying that they don't want to make the decision about the mascot or the colors until the name is created. It was a day. Ms. Brown?
Spammy. Though, I guess, would shall, we make a motion to basically re, we'll reword that one, but also say that we would like to have the administration in, I don't know the word, working with Ms., the athletic department, send out a similar communication asking for submissions for mascots and color choices?
I think it's going to be a really broad bunch of emails. What we liked was that it had, but again, so what we liked as a board, which we didn't vote on, and we actually, until we make a motion to be in charge of this, we actually don't have any, there's no policy that says that we pick the mascot or the colors. What we liked and then let go of was that we, we had the three mascot and color combinations, however, because we're not really in charge of that, they can essentially do whatever they want. So, what if they are tasked with gathering whatever information they need to make that decision about colors, and it needs to be due by June 30, by the next JSSBC meeting?
Just the 20...
The 23rd?
Third.
Or they can, they can send out a broad email and spend the next two weeks of the busiest month of the school year requesting emails from whoever wants to give submissions, and then they just have to tell us what they choose by the 30th.
Yeah, I think, I think that probably would be, we should probably just give the deadline and they can use whatever process they would like to bring us three choices, three mascots and three color combinations by whichever, whatever date. Do you want to make it this, the 27th, or do you want to move it? I mean, it would put us a month behind for the JSSBC, but you could make it for the July JSSBC meeting. Can we...
So, we just need to email it to them. It's not something that even the joint special needs to vote on, it just needs to be picked by administration and told to Harvey and Harriman.
But, are we going to choose from the three, or are we going to just let admin choose? What's the...
Admin just needs to figure out what they're going to tell Harvey and Harriman that the colors, it doesn't even need to be a mascot. Well, no, because it needs to be the mascot. It really should be a package deal, but we're doing what we need to do to get this done timely because we're respecting the 30th deadline. So, let's just say that they have to have some sort of recommendation to give to the, to give to the architect and the construction company for their June 30th request. However, the thing is, is they don't have to send out a survey, they can just pick it on their own. The thing is, what the board was trying to do, and what the board always tries to do, is include the community as much as we possibly can within the confines of timeframes and, you know, when the work of the district needs to get done, we put out as much as we can. If they don't want to send out a survey, which is what we are in support of, sending out a survey to the students that could possibly walk into this school and, and wear t-shirts and be represented by these colors and these mascots, the teachers that could possibly be there, and the parents who are also going to be buying the merchandise that has the stuff on it, and lots of other things. But, that is not within our purview. That is what, as a board, we would like that level of community engagement to be, but if district office does not want to do that, they don't have to.
I have a motion. I move to direct Central Office...
I wrote the superintendent or their designee.
The superintendent or his designee.
Because you had already started, and that's as far as I got.
To have, provide the board with a recommendation for school colors and a mascot choice by June 27th.
Is that our meeting?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Could we actually make it the 22nd, the same time that the requests for the names are supposed to be done? I'd be happy to compile both at the same time.
Sure, June 22nd.
Okay.
Unless that's not enough time. So, our meeting is the 23rd?
23rd, June, how about June 23rd? They could bring it to the, provide the ad hoc committee, sorry, the superintendent or his, or the JS, I'm sorry, or his designee. Provide...
The board.
The, the ad hoc committee.
The ad hoc naming committee.
Naming committee.
Jeez, wicked.
Suggestion, their choice for mascots and school colors by June 23rd. The board recommends that they reach out, sorry, we can, we can make a recommendation in a motion, we don't have, we can't direct them, we recommend, we can make a recommendation.
So, wait, 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 let me just get it. So, their choice for mascots and school colors?
For the new middle school.
I just want to make sure I get it. I know you're trying to think and talk at the same time, but...
By June 23rd.
By...
To be presented to the board on June 23rd.
Yeah, at the, at the 6/23 ad hoc committee...
Oh, okay.
No, we're having a 5 o'clock meeting of the ad hoc committee before the JSSBC meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. Thus far, I have motion to direct superintendent or their designee to provide the ad hoc naming committee their choice for mascots and school colors for the new middle school at the 6/23 ad hoc naming committee meeting.
The board supports the administration in contacting as many teachers, students, and stakeholders as possible while making the decision.
As many parents, students, stakeholders, as many, okay.
Teachers.
Teachers. I'm going to write parent, guardians, because I like that. Parents, guardians, students, staff. That way we get coaches and stuff too that might not be, and stakeholders. As possible, okay. As possible, and that's the end of the sentence, or did you have something else?
I think that covers it pretty broadly and specifically. I second.
Okay, Ms. Brown made the motion, and Ms. Darling seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. I'm thinking, do we want to have, I'll make this motion. "I move that the Board of Education allows the ad hoc committee chair to request data and information pertaining to and/or needed to best provide a recommendation on the name of the new middle school for full board approval."
Second. Wait, 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 I got to read it now.
Good luck with that writing.
It doesn't look like anything other people. It makes complete sense to me. Before you write it down, could I...
The board allows the ad hoc naming committee chair... The board allows the ad hoc naming committee chair...
Or vice chair.
And/or vice chair.
Or their designee. Yeah, I had to tap in Ms. Brown the other day, because I was like, I ended up having to like take a half-day at work, because I was not, it seemed unethical to be doing that much emailing.
Data and information.
Pertaining...
Oh, and/or needed to.
To and/or needed to best provide a recommendation...
I think I spell recommendation wrong every single time I write it. To...
Of the name.
Oh, on the name.
Of the new middle school. Or full board approval.
Right, because what I'd like to see hap, well, discussion, I'd like to see happen is the naming committee be able to look at the names and have at least one recommendation, if not more than one, for that Monday's meeting on the 27th.
That would be great.
But...
So anybody want to second that?
I will.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm an aye, sorry.
Seeing no opposition, motion passes unanimously. I have plans at 5:30, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't know who said that first, Johnson, Darling?
It was Ms. Johnson and Ms. Gilio. It wasn't me, I didn't catch it fast enough this time.
So we are adjourned at...
Wait, we didn't vote, did we?
Yeah, we have to vote on it.
Aye in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now adjourned at 5:36.